First of all, I'd like to welcome the Bureau Director and his team for attending this session. And I'll invite the Bureau Director to give an opening statement before the floor is open to members. And before you speak, please do press the Request to Speak button. And for members who would like to follow up on a reply given by the administration, please refer to the reply serial number on the top right-hand corner of the replies. Over to you, Bureau Director. Sorry, Chairman, well, before you speak, actually, the number of speakers has already reached ten. In fact, well, I've been dealing with that in accordance with the method that I spelled out. Well, sometimes I might not be able to see when they press the Request to Speak button, but then as far as possible, members have always complied with the rule that they would not be pressing the button before the session opens. So I would not be asking you to press the button again because I don't want to waste time. All right, next time, I'll be enforcing this more strictly, okay? Before I speak, I'll be watching that, or you would not be allowed to press the button before I ask you to. All right, over to you, Bureau Director. First of all, let me briefly brief members on the main points of the financial estimates of the Bureau in 2013-14. In 2013-14, the Bureau is allocated $500.1 million, which is $45.8 million higher than the revised estimates for 2012-13, about 10.1%. The estimated increase mainly caters for the provision of funding for the following items: Number one, conducting a survey to collect information related to Hong Kong residents in the mainland. Two, enhancing the functions of the mainland officers. And C, conducting public consultation on the electoral methods for the Chief Executive election in 2017 and the Legislative Council election in 2016 at appropriate juncture. And four, enhancing the promotion of human rights. And five, increasing subvention to implement the new provisions introduced under the PDPO 2012. And on constitutional development or electoral arrangements, as mentioned by the CEO in his policy address in 2013, the administration will launch a comprehensive consultation on the electoral methods for the CEO election in 2017 and the electoral election in 2016, and initiate the constitutional procedures at an appropriate juncture in this regard. We will make preparation in 2013-14 for the public consultation on the two electoral methods for 2016-13, for budgetary purposes, we have set aside about $7.3 million and plan to create six time-limited posts for the public consultation exercise, which is when it is launched. On District Council seats, we've already introduced a relevant amendment bill into this council in February this year for the implementation of the abolition of all District Council-appointed seats from the 1st of January 2016. And this council has just had its first meeting with regard to the Bill's Committee to scrutinize the Amendment Bill. We are conducting a review on the number of elected seats for the fifth term DC, and we will consult the panel on constitutional affairs and the District Councils later this year. If any change to the number of DC elected seats is required after the review, we will amend the relevant subsidiary legislation to reflect the outcome of the review. On voter registration, the REO, the registration and electoral office, will strengthen the publicity efforts to encourage eligible persons to register as electors and remind registered electors to update their registration particulars if they have moved to places. They will also have to update the information with us. And the REO will also continue to implement the checking measures which were introduced the last year to ensure the accuracy of the registered particulars of voters as far as practicable. In 2013-14, for the rights of the individual, with regard to the estimated total provision in human rights under the Bureau, including subventions to the EOC and the PCPD, that would amount to $177.6 million. That represents an increase of $2.9 million when compared to the revised estimates for last year, standing at $174.7 million. With regard to promotional rights of people of different sexual orientation, we have strengthened the promotion of equal opportunities for people of different sexual orientations and transgendered persons through public education publicity, including increasing the provision for the Equal Opportunity Sexual Orientation Funding Scheme to support more community projects promoting the Code of Practice Against Discrimination in Employment on the Ground of Sexual Orientation and so on and so forth. We will also study relevant legislative and administrative measures adopted by overseas jurisdictions and are planning to establish a new platform to exchange views with different stakeholders on this issue. On promoting children's rights, in 2013-14, we have earmarked about $2.15 million for implementing programs for enhancing children's rights promotion, which constitutes an increase of about 17% when compared to last year's estimates. The EOC continues to be responsible for the implementation of four anti-discrimination ordinances. The total subvention for the EOC in 2013-14 is $94.2 million. The PCPD continues to enforce the PDPO, including all the provisions of the PDPO 2012, which have come into effect since 1st of April 2013. We will work closely with the PCPD to ensure the smooth implementation of the new provisions. The total subvention for the PCPD is $63.4 million for this year. Well, in 2013-14, the financial provision under programs three for the mainland and Taiwan offices is $203.3 million, representing an increase of 15.2% when compared to revised estimates for 2012 and 13. This mainly covers the increased provisions for enhancing the functions of our mainland officers. And we have also proposed that we should set up a Hong Kong ETO in Wuhan. We will actively take forward the relevant preparatory work and plan for the Wuhan ETO to commence operation in 2014. On top of that, we are actually looking into setting up more liaison units in other mainland cities. In terms of enhancing the functions of the mainland officers, we will coordinate the implementation of a series of initiatives to enhance the functions of the mainland officers, which includes strengthening liaison with Hong Kong residents and groups in the mainland and providing them with information and assistance as far as possible, establishing an immigration division in a Chengdu ETO in collaboration with a relevant bureau and department to provide more timely assistance to Hong Kong residents in distress in the mainland, stepping up policy research efforts to facilitate Hong Kong residents and enterprises to seize the development opportunities, as well as stepping up the collection of aggregate data on Hong Kong residents in the mainland, engaging their situation and service needs through different means, and enhancing communication and publicity targeted at different sectors in the mainland with a view to promoting the strengths of Hong Kong and fostering mutual understanding and respect between Hong Kong and the mainland. On regional cooperation, we will continue to deepen regional cooperation with the mainland targeting in particular at Guangdong, Beijing, Shanghai, and the Chengdu-Chongqing Economic Zone, the Economic Zone on the west coast of the Taiwan Strait and other provinces and regions in the Panper River Delta region. On Tianhai and Nansha, we'll be working closely with relevant ministries of the central government, Guangdong and Shenzhen, to reflect views of Hong Kong industries when the respective authorities compile implementation measures of the Tianhai policies and supporting measures or policies for the implementation of the Nansha Development Plan with a view to promoting the early introduction of policies and implementation details that would facilitate Hong Kong industries' investments in Tianhai and Nansha. We will also bring to the attention of the upcoming Consultative Committee on Economic and Trade Cooperation between Hong Kong and the mainland to encourage the industry's active participation in the process. On development of Hong Kong-Taiwan relations, we will continue to make use of the communication platform between the Hong Kong-Taiwan Economic and Cultural Cooperation and Promotion Council, ECCPC, and its Taiwan counterpart, the Taiwan-Hong Kong Economic and Cultural Cooperation Council, THEC, to take forward the new cooperation areas agreed at the third joint meeting between ECCPC and THEC last year. Looking forward, we will continue to pursue with the Taiwan side cooperation on various fronts such as health and food safety, insurance supervision cooperation, and further strengthening the economic and trade relations between the two places. On promoting the Basic Law in 2013 and 14, about $16 million have been set aside for organizing promotional activities to promote the public's awareness and understanding of the Basic Law. Thank you, Chairman. Members, please do understand that we have already got seventeen members who have pressed the button, and we will have to end by 1:25. I don't want to extend the meeting any further because many members will have to have lunch, and today's meeting has been a very long one already. And so everyone will be given four minutes, and I'll be adhering to the rule very strictly. And once your time's up, whatever has not been answered will have to be provided in writing. All right, yes, Mr. Shin Chongkai? Yes, I'm following up on CMAB 33. It's about a consultation on constitutional reform. And in your reply, you said that for the 2011 election, you spent $9.3 million on that. I think Ms. Lau, Ms. Emily Lau, was also interested in the 2012 constitutional reform. And at the time, you were still the Under-Secretary. Are you referring to the 2012 consultation exercise on the constitutional arrangement? But then you did not give us a reply on that. So we'd like to know a bit more about this. So with regard to the funding for consultation that you have set aside for this occasion and last occasion, what's the difference? And also, are you referring to the 2010 consultation exercise for the 2012 election? Well, thank you, Chairman. Actually, our reply was referring to the 2012 and also the two election methods for 2012 and also the consultation for those two elections. And that's why you were referring to the 2010 exercise. Actually, earlier on, we looked at the actual spending is about $9.3 million, and that would transcend two fiscal years. That is 2019, 2010, 2010, and 11. And this time, within this financial year, we have set aside $7.3 million for the printing of documents and also organizing forums and so on. In other words, there might be a situation whereby by 2014-15, before the end of the consultation, and if you have to do a bit more, then you will have to get more funding in the next year. Is that right? Well, if that, if in the next year, we will have to continue with this consultation, then that would be included in next year's estimates. All right, on this occasion, six posts, which are time-limited, will be created. But then on the last occasion, how many posts were created for the purpose? Also, six. Yes, Mr. Shin? Next, Mr. Chan Kien Po. Yes, Chairman? Reply number 26. A question asked by Mr. Yip Kwok Kim in the reply. You said that in 2013-14, $1.3 million will be given to the PCPD for the implementation of the Personal Data Privacy Amendment Ordinance 2012. In fact, with regard to direct marketing, it came into force on the 1st of April. Earlier on, the administration said that a series of publicity and education activities, including seminars and also APIs and so on, would be launched. But then, so far, very limited has been done. We might have seen some APIs on TV, but then the message was very simple. It might not be able to fully explain the mechanism. And even in the sector, there are a lot of questions. And therefore, my question for the administration is, will you review the effectiveness of the publicity campaign? Will you be targeting the queries that the public and the sector might have so that you can consolidate everything and then you can launch a more effective series of publicity? In fact, for the regulatory measures, they've only been in place for ten years. Do you have any initial idea as to how effective it has been? Have you received any complaints? Have there been any inquiries from the sector and also the public? This is the first question. And the second question is, reply number 063. It's a question asked by Mr. Wong Kwok Kim on stalking. According to the administration, in January 2013, you've already engaged the Hong Kong U to conduct a study on anti-stalking, and some $5 million or $850,000 would be set aside for this. And you'll be looking at the result, and you'll review on what's going to be done. So I'd like to look at the scope of this study. And also, when would you expect that to be completed? And also, other than the study, with regard to the implementation of anti-stalking legislation, will other measures be introduced and what work will be done? So what's the timetable then? Secretary? Well, I'll answer the second question first. For the first question, I'll ask my colleague to answer. With regard to anti-stalking legislation, well, in response to this council and also during the last stage of consultation, in particular, the concerns raised by the media. Through a mechanism, we have engaged the Hong Kong U, a relevant college, with regard to overseas jurisdiction and also the experience overseas. The Centre for Comparative and Public Law of the Hong Kong U has been asked to conduct a study so that they would be looking at the experience of overseas jurisdictions and also the case law, and also how overseas governments would address the concerns of their media. And we'll be looking at the result of the study, and we'll come back to give you an account of the findings of the study, and we'll listen to your views. Well, with regard to the timetable, we hope that that would be completed in summer this year so that in autumn this year, that is the third or fourth quarter, we'll be able to come back to you. All right, on the first question, I'll defer to my colleague.
Undersecretary, the new amendment to the Privacy Law, once passed, has taken effect since the 1st of April 2013, and before that, we had communicated with our sector. But members would also understand that since the 1st of April, it's just been ten days or so away. Basically, we let the public know that they have the right to refuse the sale or transfer of their personal data to other organizations. We have discussed with the PCPD, and I understand that there are inquiries. And the statistics can be passed over to us, but I fully agree with the member that we should step up publicity, Ms. Emily Lau. I also want to ask about the public consultation on constitutional development. Last time, $9.3 million was spent, but this time, $7.3 million. But we have not started anything, any work at all. But this time, it will be much more difficult. Recently, the secretary led a team to the United Nations. The United Nations made it clear what universal suffrage is. And now, there have been heated discussions in the community. Every day, the Pro-Establishment Camp makes use of the opportunities created by the pro-establishment media and say a lot of things. And somebody asked me, well, have we been invited by the administration to take part in those talks? Well, even other countries would like to know what our government is doing. It involves $7 million. Has it to do with security as well? You see, in the recent meeting, that things have gone so wrong. Well, this is part of the administration's job. How can you account to the public? Secretary? $7.3 million, of course, does not cover other expenses. As I briefly said just now, similar to, the format will be similar to previous consultations. For example, the printing of consultation papers and a publicity campaign, and the provision will be provided for these matters. We have not had the official timetable yet, but if we're to begin in this financial year, we will make a necessary allocation for it. Well, he said if, well, that means it may not start within this financial year. Well, then, then don't start it. Well, it's, time is running out. You should print leaflets telling the general public what universal suffrage is about. Is it just like what Mr. Ng said? That in fact, there are two elections, one held in Hong Kong, the other in Beijing? And we had a breakfast meeting yesterday, and we were told not to make speculations. But these are not speculations. These are people sitting in front of the camera telling people these remarks. When are you going to start work and take part in the discussion? Do you know that you have this constitutional duty to do so, Secretary? The position of the SCL government is very clear. So what is it? What is it? Our legal work is based on the decision of the MPCSC and the Basic Law. We understand that there are people in the community expressing views. And we're going to kickstart the consultation work. Today, according to media reports, there are people who have put forward some specific proposals. And we will, be it conceptual ideas or specific proposals, consider all these views when we prepare the consultation papers. Chairman, does he understand that the society is getting impatient, be it pro-establishment or Democrats? Pandemic Camp, they want to kickstart the discussion right away. You are asking for $7.3 million, but they're not starting the discussion yet. So are you doing your job properly, Secretary? We have made the relevant allocation for the upcoming public consultation work. Mr. Wong Kwok Kim? Thank you, Chairman. Two questions for the Secretary. The first one is in relation to the speaking notes. The administration will launch a comprehensive consultation on the electoral methods for the CE election in 2017 and the electoral election 2016 at an appropriate juncture. And what does it mean by an appropriate juncture, Secretary? We are in the middle of April 2013. When are you going to launch a consultation on the electoral methods for the CE election? This is a hot topic now. This is the first question. The second question has to do with the speaking notes towards CN, paragraph 18. The administration has set aside $16 million for promoting the Basic Law. I very much support this initiative. So my question for the Secretary is, Article 45 of the Basic Law is about the election of the Chief Executive. Has the administration any focused approach in explaining to the general public Article 45 of the Basic Law? And also, the MPCSC's interpretation of the electoral methods for the CE election should be properly explained to the public so that in the future, a consensus can be forged more easily? Two questions. Secretary? On the first question, well, in the CEO's policy address, he said that the consultation will be launched at an appropriate juncture. So we will reserve ample time for this purpose and also for our public consultation and to carry out the consultation exercise. In 2013-14, we have set aside $7.3 million for this work. And today, I do not yet have a timetable as to when the consultation will be launched. About the second question, about $16 million funding for promoting the Basic Law, from various aspects and through various channels, we will conduct or organize such promotional activities. Now, in fact, we have Article 45 and also Article 68 of the Basic Law together with the annexes in relation to the electoral methods for the CE election and electoral election. And we will explore different channels, for example, seminars and other forums, where we can seriously discuss the topic. Mr. Wong? Secretary, you said that it will be launched at an appropriate juncture. But have you noticed that Mr. Chow Chau Yang recently met with the members from the Pro-Establishment Camp in Shenzhen, basically regarding Article 45 of the Basic Law and the MPCSC's requirements? There should be an initiative to promote the public's awareness and understanding of the Basic Law so that a consensus can be forged more easily in the future discussion. Secretary, have you noted this point? Ms. Dr. Lo Wai Kwok? Thank you, Chairman. Regarding the Secretary's speaking notes on the work of the Privacy Commissioner, I have some questions. In the octopus incident, when the octopus sold customers' data, there were wider public repercussions. And recently, the Hong Kong Preventive Association tricked 360,000 people into giving their personal data to them, which were then resold to an insurance broker. And the Privacy Commissioner condemned the two companies, but then there was no redress for this problem. The new legislation has come into effect, but one of the major loopholes about this privacy law is the personal particulars, including ID numbers and residential addresses of company directors. And as close as 1 million directors are registered in Hong Kong, and the personal data of the 1 million directors are open for access to the public. Recently, unfortunately, I note that the administration has yielded to the pressure and have put the new arrangement for inspecting the CR on the backburners. And it's really ironic because on the one hand, it said that we would support the work of the Privacy Commissioner, but on the other hand, I wonder if the administration is really sincere about this.
So how are you able to ensure that the work of the PCPD can roll out smoothly? Bureau Director? Thank you. Mr. Dr. Lo referred to the two circumstances. The second one first. All right, well, that's basically the, under the company's ordinance, and that's why it's under the CEDP's portfolio. But then, as the Privacy Commissioner said a few days ago, he already got a very clear stance. He already indicated that. Well, whether it's human rights or privacy consideration, our stance has always been that we will have to strike the right balance with regard to different values and different stances. And I'm sure for Professor Casey Chen, well, he is looking into this. He has suspended the implementation of the relevant provisions, but then it doesn't mean that he will not be listening to your views and views from all walks of life. And therefore, we will continue to liaise closely with Professor Casey Chen on how this should be taken forward. On the incident that you just referred to, I'm sure the Privacy Commissioner was referring to this as a regulator. And he was going about his job in accordance with the law. And we do respect the independence of the commission and the views expressed by the commissioner. But then, we understand that there are further concerns expressed in the community about what the commissioner just said. And this morning, I also exchanged views with the Secretary for Security on this. And if there is any need for complaints to be filed, whether or not they are filed with the PCPD or other authorities, that will be taken up accordingly. Well, I hope that concerning the company registry inspection or search of directors' particulars, I hope that you will insist on the position adopted by the PCPD. Many members are supportive of this, but then all of a sudden, that's been suspended, and I do not understand that. I hope that at appropriate juncture, you would table it again. Mr. Jeffrey Lam? Well, recently, in the eastern part of China, there was an outbreak of H7N9, and many members of the public are very concerned about this. And you've already announced that preventive measures will be rolled out. So you'll be increasing resources for ETOs on the mainland so that should there be any outbreak of avian flu in other cities of China, you'll be able to cope. And how are you able to assist Hong Kong residents who are working on the mainland where there might be outbreaks? And you've been saying that, well, as the Chief Executive emphasized, you will have to do better in terms of diplomacy with mainland cities and so on. So will more resources be set aside for those purposes? And also in strengthening internal diplomacy, what will be done precisely? Bureau Director? Yes, last week, whether it's Dr. Ko Wingman or the Chief Secretary for Administration, there is some interdepartmental or internal mechanism. Our mainland ETOs have also been involved in the process. I'll defer to the Under-Secretary, I'll defer to the Permanent Secretary, who will give you more details. Yes, as you are aware, for the time being, with regard to the outbreak of such epidemics, well, basically, it's happening in Shanghai ETO. And some inquiries have been made with our Shanghai ETO. And therefore, well, when our officers from those ETOs came back to Hong Kong, well, this morning, the Centre for Health Protection has already arranged for a briefing to these ETO representatives. well, this morning, the Centre for Health Protection has already arranged for a briefing to these ETO representatives so that they would be made aware of the symptoms of such disease and also what preventive measures would be needed. And should there be a manifestation or should they come down with symptoms, what they should do and so on? And we have also collected the information from them on the mainland and what assistance they would need. And also in response to the second question raised by Mister Lam on diplomacy with mainland cities and authorities, well, the Chief Executive talked about enhancing the roles of mainland ETOs in twenty thirteen fourteen. The funding would be some one hundred and seventy million dollars when compared to last year. That was an increase by some fifteen percent, fifteen point five to be precise. And that would cover several areas of work, including the enhancing of the functions of the ETOs. For example, the Chengdu ETO will have an additional immigration unit to help Hong Kong residents in distress on the mainland. And also will also be distributing the funding to different ETOs on the mainland so that they would be able to conduct policy research. And that would also help them improve their ability in collecting views from Hong Kong businessmen on the mainland and also providing timely assistance to them. And that would also help step up publicity and communication channels. For example, by organizing exhibitions and also printing booklets on what to do in where there are incidents. And also the enhanced communication with different sectors on the mainland, including CPPCC delegates and so on. We would also like to know a bit more about their needs at different times and how we can provide them with more appropriate assistance. For what we've been doing, we will continue with that. All right, time's up. All right, well, for Doctor Tam, well, Mister Lam asked some questions. Please provide something in writing later. Yes, I'd like to go after Mister Tam on several issues. Well, since the consultation on equal rights for people of different sexual orientation has disappeared, well, on the sixteenth of January at the CA panel meeting, you said that there will be no consultation, but then you would be putting in more resources for publicity and so on, and also education and so on. In paragraph nine, you just you said that you'd be promoting the message that people with different sexual orientation should enjoy equal rights. But then on constitutional reform, only six lines. And also on other issues, you've been you actually devote even less attention to that. But then, how much funding will be available for that? And also, question number zero zero one or reply number zero zero one, only two point seven four million dollars will be set aside for that purpose. And that would also include the staff costs for the relevant unit, that is gender identity and sexual orientation unit and so on. And you said that you would be doing a bit more, including shooting APIs and also on the MTL station and advertisements and so on. And also on your website, more funding will be made available. And this morning, according to the CS4A, some eight hundred thousand dollars will be set aside for that purpose. I don't have the figure for last year. And also for the code of practice for the elimination of discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation and so on and so forth. All right, a number of tasks will be included. But then, in this year, how much more funding is made available? Well, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. All right, it increased from two point seven four million dollars to two point nine nine million dollars. Or this is just window dressing and it's a lip service. All right, how much more can you do with two hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Are you going to shoot one more film clip or are you going to hire one additional staff? And also, in last year's budget and also estimates, well, the actual spending was some fifty percent more than the estimates. In other words, you actually spent some two point seven four million dollars when the estimates was only one point eight four million dollars. And also with Doctor York Chow assuming the chairmanship of the EOC, he said that promoting equal opportunity for people with different sexual orientation would be his top priority. But then, for the budget for his office or his commission, there will only be an increase by one percent. And if you are going to ask the EOC to do the job, then how much can it do? And also in zero zero two, in the second paragraph, in twenty thirteen fourteen, the EOC has no plan to allocate funding to conduct publicity activities and studies on promoting non-discrimination on the ground of sexual orientation because the issue is not directly within the EOC's ambit. So is it that Doctor York Chow has got it wrong? Or is it that your staff have got it wrong? So Mister Tam, can you explain that together? All right, in twenty thirteen fourteen, when compared to the revised estimates last year, there was a revision by some nine point one percent. And Mister Chen, you accurately pointed out the situation. But then in twenty thirteen, well, the original estimate was one point eight four million dollars. That's for twenty twelve and thirteen. But then I thought that the funding should be increased. That's why that should be increased to two point seven four million dollars. In the coming year, we have set aside two point nine nine million dollars for the purpose. But then, we have just started the intervention program for this year and applications are coming in. And we have also started the publicity and education campaign. I'll be looking at the situation. And when necessary, in coming up with the revised budget for this year, we'll be prepared to increase resources for those purposes. Doctor Kenneth Chan, Chairman. Well, this morning, we have two major subjects other than equal rights. That's the we have the constitutional reform consultation. You said that some seminars will be organized. You hope to have in-depth discussion and more interaction with the community. Well, on this occasion, will there be new ideas or innovative ideas other than what we are most familiar with? Seminars and also some district-based forums and also the ACTUP shows and so on? Would there be more interaction with the community? For example, opinion polls and also territory-wide discussion day and so on. So would there be new initiatives in collecting public opinions on constitutional reforms? Bureau Director. Well, according to our current plan, we haven't got all the details out yet on how the consultation should be taken forward. And of course, we'll be looking at the effective ways of collecting public views on this. Well, we will be open to all ideas and suggestions. And Doctor Chen also referred to some ideas. And all in all, I hope that in conducting the consultation, the SL government will be able to do that on the basis of the existing legal framework and the Basic Law. Well, even if we were to conduct a territory-wide discussion, that would not be against the law. Indeed, the academia is very concerned about this. And they've also come up with a lot of ideas and they would also be willing to contribute. And I'm also interested in CMAB zero zero four. Well, the question is about liaison with different central people governments establishments in Hong Kong. But then you have not given any details yet. So is it that you have no idea as to what these organizations are? Or, well, as the Chief Executive said, he would attach importance to diplomacy with mainland authorities and cities. But then, you do not have, but then is it that you do not have any records of such activities? Or even Mister Timothy Tong, the ICAC Commissioner, also said that there was certain meetings and so on. And he also gave a number of interviews to media organizations worldwide. So how come you're not prepared to give the details up here? Well, as I said in my reply, well, for different bureaus, including our bureau, we will have to liaise with these CPG establishments stationed in Hong Kong. We maintain a working relationship with them. And sometimes it's through social networking and other activities we would liaise with them. But then, we do not have an independent entry for such spending. In fact, on some occasions, there's no spending at all. That's why we have provided all the information that we have in the reply. But according to my understanding, such events would also involve state secrets and so on for the details of such activities. Do you have the detailed records of these? Bureau Director, as I said in my reply, we do not keep a separate counter to capture the related expenditure. Next, Miss Alice Mack. Chairman.
In the opening statement by the secretary, then no details were given on the abolition of appointed seats for the DC. But then how about elected seats? So I'd like to know the timetable and the plan for the review. Will you be consulting the districts, in particular, the DCs? Will you be consulting them? Because we also have to bear that in mind because some people are talking about the size of individual DCs and how the constituencies should be drawn and so on. So I'd like to ask two other questions. Well, in zero fifty-eight, well, additional funding will be given to enhance the roles and functions of the four ETOs on the mainland. But then if you look at the funding, well, the four ETOs will be given a different amount of funding. Well, for the Chengdu office, yes, some more resources will be needed as it's a new office. But then how about the other three? Would it be that for the Beijing office, you'll be giving them more money? That's because it's in the capital city. And also in zero five nine, you also talk about helping residents in distress on the mainland. So with regard to the complaints that you've received, well, do you have any detailed breakdown as to the nature of such requests for assistance? Does that have to do with immigration or other matters and so on? And also for Hong Kong residents in distress in the mainland? If they ran into trouble, if it was during the holiday period, then what's going to happen? Well, I've also received a request for help. All right, that's because it's in the course of holidays, sometimes there might be delays in offering them assistance. So what is your policy? Should that happen in holidays, then there might be delays. So in enhancing the roles and functions, will you be enhancing such work too? Bureau Director, thank you.
Well, for the two issues involving the mainland, I'll be asking my colleague to answer. Well, actually, we have been working hard on enhancing the role of the ETO. In fact, on the twenty-second of March, a working group was set up. And that's, well, it's been disclosed by the Census and Statistics Department and the Planning Department is about the population projection for the next, well, for the future. And we hope that within the next month or so, we'll be coming back to the CA panel to consult you on your views. And after getting your feedback, we'll be amending the substantial legislation. We hope that within twenty thirteen, we can complete that work. And after that, then the Commission or the EAC will be coming up with the demarcation of the boundaries for the four hundred plus constituencies and the public will be consulted. And the DCs will be consulted too. And that would be done in the fourth quarter of this year or first quarter of next year. That's the timetable. With regard to the mainland issue, I defer to the Permanent Secretary. There are two issues. Number one, about residents in distress and the complaints and also the breakdown of work. Well, basically, that would be looked at at two levels. Number one, the immigration unit of the ETO will be dealing with Hong Kong residents who have lost money or lost their passports and also issues involving the safety on the mainland. And also, well, the immigration department, together with the Security Bureau, will be dealing with such distress calls overseas. And also for those seeking help from different departments, well, the businesses will be looking at the that will be dealt with as part of business deals.
I'd like to ask a question in relation to zero seven nine and zero eighty-one. Because at different levels of elections on the technology applied and also in verifying information, well, as voters, sometimes we feel that we are really lagging behind because they have to use a ruler and they will ask people to queue up in a certain line. And I think with more imagination and also in a community, they've also got some major election event and they've already got some experience. And if you are able to make use of advanced IT systems, then that would be very speedy and accurate. Because on the last occasion, during the electoral election, within the voting station, well, there were some problems or hiccups, for example, when they go to the conventional voting station, they were not given the voting ballot papers and so on.
But in fact, you can just look it up in the computer system. Why is it that all along, Hong Kong is still using the old method? So my question here is for the administration to consider whether they have considered the use of electronic systems. And in the beginning of twenty twelve, the Pandemic Credit Camp held a pre-election, our primary election. And we found that the use of an electronic system would greatly help boost the voting rate because one would not have to be confined to a particular voting station. So we can consider resolving this issue through technical means. And in your reply, you said that you have already started the feasibility study on adopting more information technology and identifying suitable IT options, et cetera. So my question is, what enhancement measures are you having in mind? Has it to do with voters' information at voting stations? And what else, Secretary? The direction is that we'd like to use more advanced technology to help us with our work. For details, I will defer to Mister Lee to give you a more detailed answer, Mister Lee Pat Hong. And Chairman, we have been reviewing our arrangements, including the use of the existing IT system. And from the Central Fund, we have applied for funding for feasibility study so that during the next election cycle, we may we may boost the efficiency in terms of the electoral arrangements with the use of IT. And for the existing election system, we have been using it for nine to ten years. And it's time for us to conduct a comprehensive review to ensure that efficiency the next election cycle. Secondly, we will also see or explore the greater use of IT for voters to check the data that are on the register. Now, on the voting process and the counting of votes, we also will also look at whether IT could be used to expedite the progress. For example, as the member mentioned, we may use information technology to expedite the verification of voters' identity at the stations. But we need to study those technical aspects in detail. Because as said by Mister Charles Mok just now, if we rely on an electronic system, well, please tell me after the meeting. Doctor Priscilla Lang. I want to follow up on CMAB zero seven four. I have been pursuing this issue. Two hundred and seventeen thousand electors were struck off. And first of all, have you categorized these electors who were struck off? How many cases involve deaths or moving houses? Or how many of them actually lived on the mainland for a long period of time? And also, in the last paragraph, you said that six point seven million dollars has been earmarked for publicity efforts. So do you have any target groups? Say, if a particular category of electors being struck off, that would be the target group for publicity. And you will tell them unless you pay attention to these points, you'll be struck off from the register. The other question is about Hong Kong residents in distress. In the mainland, we see that the number of cases requiring assistance have been on the rise. And I'm referring to reply zero five nine. We're talking not just about voting rights, but also about other rights. Now, under the existing regime, they cannot even get legal advice should they encounter any difficulties in the mainland. And it's difficult for us to provide assistance because we And it's difficult for us to provide assistance because it's across the border. So can any help be given to them at the very first stage? We discussed whether the Legal Aid Scheme can be relaxed to cover a wider scope, including any Hong Kong residents in mainland who are in distress and facing legal issues on the mainland. And also, another problem is about mainland visitors and criticisms against them. For example, that they're locals and they are stepping up formula milk, et cetera. There are biased views. So will more resources be allocated to eliminate such biased views? I'll defer to Mr. Lee to take the first question first. Now, about the 217,000 electors struck off from the register, they do not include those that have passed away. Twenty-two thousand electors have been struck off as a result of them passing away. And for the remaining electors, we issued an inquiry letter, and it's when they have not replied to our letter that we struck them off the register. As for Hong Kong entrepreneurs on the mainland, we do not have this information. As for the $6.7 million earmarked for publicity efforts, well, they include several areas. First of all, we encourage eligible voters to be registered. And secondly, for voters who have moved from the previous residential address, they should check their registered details and update if necessary. And that includes the 210,000 electors struck off from the register last year. So please help these voters to make them eligible. Mr. Mung Sing. Thank you. I want to follow up on CMAB 042. Question number 2875, basically about the funding reserved for the ETO. $24.6 million will be reserved for its work, and I very much agree with this initiative. And mainland has the largest population, and we are very close to the mainland markets, so more resources should be allocated. And I'd like to commend the ETOs on the mainland. They have been following up on a number of issues, including the representatives who have done a good job in liaison work when we attended the conference in Beijing. And my question here is about internal diplomacy. In the future, with more resources, here it says exhibitions and cultural performances would be held. So any criteria on the selection of performance groups? And any targets? If so, would there be any evaluation reports after the events? PS, would you take this question? In enhancing the ETO's functions in internal diplomacy, one of the areas is to provide greater assistance to Hong Kong residents on the mainland and to enhance their living quality and to step up liaison with mainland counterparts. And one of the areas is to promote the positive image of Hong Kong to the mainland cities so as to enhance the mutual understanding between Hong Kong residents and mainland residents and to promote mutual respect for each other. We have different channels, different tools for that. We have cultural exchanges, exhibitions, and introductions on websites. And the coming year, we will allocate more resources for each ETO to promote Hong Kong in their own cities. For example, in Beijing, more resources will be provided because it is the leading city. It is situated at the strategic location. And I will defer to my colleague to brief members on the upcoming, on the plan, on the plan in upcoming year. Ms. Chu. There's one initiative, and that is we promote positively the image of Hong Kong in mainland cities, including exhibitions and other events. And in the coming year, we will work with the LCSD and mainland counterparts in enhancing mutual understanding between Hong Kong and mainland residents. We are going to have some cultural performance or artistic performances and exhibitions. We hope that through these channels, we'll be able to reach or achieve our goal. And we're going to print leaflets and put up advertisements in the newspapers there. And in terms of participants and visitors, we also attach importance to their response and their feedback. Mr. Yip Ho Kim. Thank you, Chairman. Two questions. One about District Council. It's also in the secretary's speaking note. At present, the legislation or the bill has been tabled into legislature on the abolition of seats. Now, very soon, there'll be a higher proportion of elected DC members. But the constituencies of district councils may be, district councils may be different. So there might be difference in the number of members in district councils. Some may be smaller. And will you conduct a review or will you conduct any consultation? The other question is about paragraph 14 of your speaking notes. Here, you said that you would enhance the functions of ETO offices on the mainland. And one of the concerns is to provide more timely assistance to Hong Kong residents in distress in the mainland. This is important because at present, more has to do with help in relation to immigration and publicity efforts. But at the same time, when you enhance the functions, how can you also consider the assistance aspects? For example, the houses are being pulled down for development purpose. No assistance has been given. Will you consider providing assistance to them or enhance your function by doing so? Because the SAR government might be able to negotiate with the mainland counterpart or provide assistance to them. Will you consider that? Secretary. On DC seats for the 18 administrative districts, they vary in size and population. Over the past period, the HAB and R Bureau also received a lot of comments on this issue. And we have been asked whether, at an appropriate juncture, we would review the size and demarcation of the 18 administrative districts. On this point, myself and HAB are looking into this issue. In the future, if we come back to the CA panel to brief members on the number of seats in DCs, we will be happy to take views from members as the reference for our way forward. And may I invite the ETO Office Director in Guangdong to say something about the second point? Ms. Chu. Ms. Chu. Under the principle of one country, two systems, there is a particular framework for Hong Kong government to provide assistance to Hong Kong residents in distress in the mainland. If it involves a private dispute or if it involves a case that has gone to the judicial process, we need to follow the legal process under the framework. But where it is the wish of the Hong Kong residents to request for assistance, we may help by referring the case to a lawyer or providing a list of lawyers. But it's based on the wish of the person involved. Say, for example, relatives might be notified, or the case may be reflected to the mainland counterparts for their response.
Well, I have two questions. Number one, CMAB 042 is about cultural exchange with Taiwan and the mainland. And the other one is about the Basic Law, 043. All right, on cultural exchange, according to the government's reply, well, with regard to cultural exchange for the ETO, well, there's no breakdown of the detailed funding. But I think that's a very important indicator. So can I make this suggestion? Can you have a breakdown? So that for the different entries, the actual spending can be set out more clearly. That would also facilitate our interpretation and assessment. And next is about the promotion of cultural exchange for Hong Kong's arts and performance groups. And what you've been doing is that, well, for activities that we have taken part, yes, you have been helping Hong Kong groups. But then for mainland ETOs, you should strive to have more Hong Kong groups staging performances on the mainland. But then that would require long-term follow-up, and you would also have to have a better understanding of the mainland performance sector. So do you have to deploy dedicated staff so that they can focus on cultural exchange work in order to do a better job? And the next question is about the Basic Law. I believe that on the promotion of the understanding of the Basic Law, I've also talked to the steering committee's members, what they've been adopting a very conventional approach and mainstream approach. They have not been looking at the current issues, for example, on the CE election and so on. I think precisely, before anything happens, you should have done something. For example, legal experts, the media, and also different media groups, they are not very clear about the provisions of the Basic Law. They might even have misunderstood the provisions. So you should have spent the money more appropriately. So, Director?
Yes, I agree with what you said. So as Mr. Wong Ho Kim and Mr. Ma Feng Ko just said, we should be doing a bit more. As to cultural exchange, I'll defer to the Permanent Secretary. Yes, well, for cultural exchange activities organized by ETOs, one of the main purposes is to enhance understanding between the two places and the residents so that they would gradually be more prepared to accommodate one another. But then for sports and cultural exchange, there are two levels. Number one is regional cooperation. For example, in conjunction with Guangdong, Shanghai, and even Beijing, we do have another cooperation platform. And under the regional cooperation platform or agreement, well, with regard to cultural and sports exchange, different policy bureaus have already reached an agreement with them. And there would also be different ways to do this. And of course, our LCSD has also got cultural exchange programs in place. And in the coming year, we will be paying more attention to the activities organized by our ETOs on the mainland so that we might have a separate counter for that. Mr. Ma?
Yes, I think what's important is to ensure that our artists and also our performance groups, they should be able to stage more performance on the mainland. Well, the spending would not be too much, but then the effect will be very significant. And that would also be very important in promoting the development of our arts and cultural sector. And in promoting our cultural sector, you should also deepen your work here. And of course, you will have to work closely with the relevant bureaus and so on. But then if you have dedicated staff on that, that would also be very important.
Mr. Tony Che. Yes, I'd like to follow up on several issues. Number one, reply serial number, CMAB 013. It's a question asked by Mr. Christopher Zhang. Well, more will be done in terms of investments. So I'd like to know, out of the 154 projects, how many of them have to do with professional services? And how effective have they been? And will you be looking at individual programs? Will you be conducting effectiveness surveys on this? Yes? Yes, Permanent Secretary. All right, this question is about the mainland and Taiwan offices and also the investment promotion units in those offices. Well, as the honourable member just said, according to the Invest Hong Kong unit, well, there would be 154 new projects, and most of them have to do with financial services or the creative industry and so on. As to the detailed information that the member just asked for, we can ask the Invest Hong Kong unit to provide us with further details. So have you conducted any effectiveness survey? Well, we will collect the information and provide a reply to members. Reply number 017 is a question asked by KK Fong. It sets out many study items. I'd like to know which study has been completed, which are still underway. Next. Well, for those where studies have been completed, has the administration looked at them and see how the recommendations can be implemented? What follow-up work has been taken to ensure that Hong Kong SMEs will be able to enter the mainland market?
Yes, Bureau Director? Thank you. With regard to this specific information being requested, we will provide details in writing afterwards because it involves a number of projects. Yes, Tony Che, any further follow-up? No. Next, Sit Ho.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll be citing several questions and the replies in asking my questions. Number one is anti-discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation. As you are aware, at the Human Rights Committee, on the 28th of March, it published a report on the implementation of the convention in Hong Kong. And it says that Hong Kong should be legislating on different forms of discrimination with regard to sexual orientation. But then on the anti-stalking legislation, some $850,000 have been set aside for that. But then with regard to the UNHRC's recommendation on how you can implement your obligation under that convention, out of the $2.99 million, have you got any funding for the study on legislating on the grounds of sexual orientation? And if you do not have that planned this year, how about next year? And also with regard to the study and the funding for those, well, it's very unevenly distributed. For example, if you look at 017, well, even for staff and also the rental assistance for rent allowance review, you spend some $1.29 million. But then for the HRC's request that we do something about it, you have not even spent a cent on it. So how did you decide on how much funding would be used for certain purposes or different studies? Bureau Director?
On sexual orientations, anti-discrimination legislation, well, within the Bureau, our colleagues are now conducting a series of studies. We are actually looking at overseas jurisdictions where there is such legislation in the legislative process, what issues they've taken on board and so on. So we are doing this. And as is done internally, we have already absorbed the spending internally. And also, with the new EOC Commissioner taking office on the 1st of April, we've already exchanged views with him initially. And whether it's the Bureau or the EOC, we attach a lot of importance to this work. And I'll be discussing with the EOC Chairman further as to how we can further cooperate or whether there might be division of labor between us. For example, we would... For example, we would need to look at overseas experience and also what's the situation in Hong Kong so that before we take the matter forward on whether we should consult on anti-discrimination legislation in Hong Kong. All right, I'll further the ace with the Chairman of the E O C before we take the matter forward. I only have one minute left. All right, the H R C is not asking us to consult on whether or not we should introduce legislation because at the beginning, the H R C already said that some sixty percent, according to the E O C survey and also our opinion poll, who said that there should be legislation on anti-discrimination on sexual orientation. All right, there is no need for consultation at all. I think for the future consultation, that it should be targeted at eliminating misleading theories and arguments and so on. That's for clarification purposes. So the consultation is not to ask people whether or not we should introduce legislation. In fact, on the contrary, we should be looking at the scope of the legislation and also religious groups should be granted certain exemptions. I think that should be the focus of the study. So can you give us something in writing? That is, how many staff members, including both those from the E O C and your bureau, how many will be deployed for that purpose? I'd like to ask zero three four. All right. And Miss Emily La was asking about human rights education and through school education, community activities and so on. You've been promoting education on human rights. And I noticed that in paragraph six of the reply, well, two important departments, that is the E D B and also the C P C E. In their spending with regard to human rights promotion, there is no separated accounts. So how come there is no separation or breakdown of the spending? Is it that you don't think it's necessary? Or is it that you don't have such plans? Well, in terms of the statistics, if you think that it's important, then you will try to collect the data. And if there is no such breakdown, what's the reason? Can you explain? Bureau Director? I'll ask the Under Secretary to answer this question. Yes, Under Secretary?
Well, I think we will have to go back and take a look. We can provide you with further details.
Mister Ip Kin Yuen?
All right, if you do not have such breakdowns, I think it's very important to give us the breakdowns. Well, for human rights education, well, I think it's a very important part of our education because we have to ensure that our next generation will have a very good grasp of the issue. Okay, on the one hand, we need to have the breakdown. And on the other, we also want to set aside sufficient funding for the purpose. So will you consider setting up a particular fund? Because you do have many funds for different purposes. All right, this is a human rights education fund. Is that feasible and is it desirable? Under Secretary? Well, in promoting human rights, well, the work is scattered around different departments, including the E O C, including the P D, P C P D. And some of these are targeted. For example, on the promotion of human rights. And in different organizations and departments, resources will be given to them to undertake this work. As to whether or not that should be covered by an umbrella fund, well, of course, that could also be considered. But then for the work that is being done by different departments and authorities, I think it's been effective and it's been well-established. I think our view is somewhat different from the Under Secretaries. Well, there is a far cry from our perceived situation. For example, the E O C has been given some funding, but then on promoting human rights, very little has been done. And as far as the E D B is concerned, well, well, in relation to human rights promotion, I think very little has been done. And of course, that's the impression. And of course, the Under Secretary might think differently. So do we need to have policies to ensure that human rights education will receive proper attention by different government departments? And setting up a fund is one idea. But then there might be other ways of ensuring that human rights education and the relevance fund and the relevant spending will be proportionally right. All right.
Under Secretary? In relation to the implementation of policy, it's purview of every policy bureau. We attach importance to promoting human rights. The human rights issue spans across a number of policy bureaus. As to whether sufficient resources have been provided, we have heard the members' views. We will look at the situation. Mister Christopher Jung?
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to know about the investment in the two places in twenty thirteen. In question number one eighty-seven, out of the one hundred and fifty-four investment projects, one hundred and thirty-four projects are from the mainland and twenty from Taiwan and twenty percent has to do with financial services. So my question for the administration is whether the administration can give you, give us more details on the services involved and whether there'll be any impact on the personnel in the sector. Yes, I have undertaken just now that we will get from Invest Hong Kong, the details as requested, including the details relating to financial services, what these projects are about and what the results are. We will get this information and provide a written answer to Mister Jung. Mister Jung? So, well, do you have any expectation on the business opportunities brought about by these investment projects to Hong Kong investors? Now, the investment promotion units of the, they're both offices and Invest Hong Kong has the same goal. And that is we promote the, our advantages. We promote our services, including financial services, in order to attract investors. So our promotional effort will be focused on benefits for enterprises and investors as to how these benefits can be quantified or qualified. I think we need further details. Mr. Raymond Wong?
Chairman, in the secretary's speaking notes on the point about constitutional development, you just follow the practice of six, eight, nine. You have to do the bidding of the, of the central authorities. So if they have not issued any orders, you should refrain from doing anything. And so you have just this short paragraph. You will make preparation in twenty thirteen, fourteen for the public consultation on the two electoral methods for twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen. So you're not launching the public consultation in twenty thirteen, fourteen. You're just making preparation for the public consultation. So what exactly are you doing? According to the interpretation by the N P C S C in oh four and a decision in oh seven, we are supposed to follow a five-step mechanism. So you should do your homework, it's very clear. That means the Communist Party is ruling Hong Kong and they can make any amendments they want. And the pro-establishment camp just follow, follow the reinterpretation in twenty oh four and the decision in twenty oh seven. You make no mentioning of the three-step mechanism in Article ninety of the Basic Law. And in fact, you are waiting for a report to be released for the electoral methods in twenty sixteen, seventeen. And before the release of the report, you need to, you need to ask for the endorsement of the N P S C, N P C S C. And the third step is to come back to legal and the fourth step for C E to endorse it. And finally, for, to be submitted, the report to be submitted to N P C S C. So you are like, you're not just a lucky of Hong Kong people, you are lucky of a lucky. You should be accountable to us because constitutional reform is for Hong Kong people. But no, now you are waiting for central authorities to issue orders before you act. So you are not a lucky, you are a lucky of a lucky. In twenty thirteen, fourteen, you are going to make preparation for the public consultation for the two electoral methods for twenty sixteen and seventeen. So Mister Raymond Tam, after you become Secretary for the, Secretary for C M A, you just follow the bidding of six, eight, nine. How complex will this consultation exercise be? This seven million dollars is just a waste, it just goes down the drain. What is meant by making preparation for the consultation in twenty six, for the electoral methods in twenty sixteen, seventeen? Are we out of our minds? Are we really going to set aside seven million dollars for you to do that? We're going to propose amendments in the budget debate to do away with this. Last time, last year, we asked for a pay cut for you. But this time, we say that you should be sacked because we know that your bureau is rubbish, there is no value. Of course, not referring to you, Mister Raymond Tam, you can continue to exist. But the bureau doesn't have to exist because the N P C interpreted the law in twenty oh four and twenty oh seven. A new mechanism has come by, the decision came by. And it's up to the central authorities to make any decision. Your time is up. No, four minutes.
Miss Claudia Moore? I think this bureau should be, should be done away with. Miss Claudia Moore, thank you, Chairman. On constitutional development, I have also read this paragraph in the speaking notes. For government expenditure, it's in the denomination of hundreds of millions. But now, you, here you have this figure, seven point three million dollars, and then bracket excluding staff cost. So you, you are impressing upon us that you are totally insincere about constitutional development. You are not fully committed. Seven point three million dollars will just go down the drain because it's wasted. We don't know what, how the money will be spent. If you are serious about your work, how would seven point three million dollars be sufficient? Even for the government relocate, government office relocation, you need hundreds of millions of dollars. So what do you mean by making preparation for the public consultation? And who, what, when, where, why? Can you answer all these questions? Secretary?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Miss Claudia Moore, for at least giving me some time to respond. For seven point three million dollars funding, it's for the preparation work for the public consultation exercise. We're using for existing, we're using existing resources within our bureau. For example, when the consultation is launched, we need to prepare for the necessary papers. As for the seven point three million dollars, we have made reference to the consultation exercise conducted two or three years ago. They involve the three areas, namely, printing of consultation papers, setting up of website and publicity efforts involving various media, including new media. And also forums, consultation forums and seminars. We need to hire venues. So for seven point three million dollars, this is the estimate for this financial year. As mentioned, last time we spent some slightly over nine million dollars and it actually spent across two legislative years. So after twenty thirteen, fourteen, if more funding has to be reserved, we will do so accordingly. But I need to pursue this question. You are to, we plan to create six time limited polls. It's very vague. Can you answer my questions? Who, what, when, where, why? You have not given us a timetable about the six time limited polls. Again, we have made reference to our past experience. It's based on clerical, I mean, we, we looked at the past experience, clerical, our duties have to be done. And we have executive officers and clerical officers, E O one and E O two, and also for C A or C O's. Because all the consultation, all the submissions responding to the consultation will have to be collated into a compendium. And this is based on the time period required for the consultation, sometimes six months, sometimes nine months. Timetable. As said just now, we don't have a concrete timetable as yet. Your time is up, Secretary. Doctor Helena Wong?
Thank you, Chairman, two questions. One about the consultation for constitutional reform. A lot of members have asked questions. And according to your reply, the general public has this doubt in mind. Mister Chow Xiaoyang made some remarks. He said that in relation to love for the country, love for Hong Kong and opposition against the central authorities, if the C candidate cannot meet or does not possess these qualities, no consultation will be launched. Does it mean that if no consensus can be reached, you don't have to do anything? And the other question is in relation to loving, love for the country, love for Hong Kong, will you conduct consultation on this point? Secretary?
I think when we launch a consultation, it will be done on the basis of the electoral methods for the two elections, including the provisions in the basic law and the decision of the N P C S C. And this is the answer to the first question. The second part of your question, in fact, I have also read the remarks made by Mister Chow Xiaoyang. He didn't mean that no consultation should be launched at this stage. He just meant that it would be quite difficult in, in our consultation exercise if no consensus has been reached at this moment. We would be dragging our feet, but he hasn't really used those exact words. I believe that once we receive the direction from the Chief Executive, we will launch consultation. You haven't answered my question. What is meant by opposing the central authorities or loving your country, loving Hong Kong? Will you conduct any consultation? I think that the basis of our consultation will be the provisions in the basic law. So what Mister Chow's remarks can be disregarded. This won't be part of the basis of consultation. I have read the remarks of Mister Chow Xiaoyang. Much of his remark had to do with, with N P C and basic law. I also have a question that's following up on reply number zero three eight, a reply to Miss Emily La's question. About the number of cases involving discrimination against sexual orienta, against gender received every year and sex discrimination, of course, that includes sexual harassment as well. If there are only some thirty cases per year, I do have some doubts on this figure. Of course, you're referring to new complaints. But my question is whether you will allocate more resources apart from publicity and public education programs. You will also collect sexual harassment cases and sex discrimination cases in schools, primary, secondary, tertiary institutes, as well as public hospitals and even public psychiatric hospitals. as well as public hospitals and even, um, public psychiatric hospitals.
And it's been reported in the media that actually, um, everything will have to be done on a voluntary basis. Yes, I'll be taking this up with the E O C Chairman because the E O C Chairman also told me that shortly after his assumption of office, obviously, he would be coming to this council to give an account to members. And what you said just now, I'll be conveying this to the E O C Chairman. And then I'll see if he will be able to give you a more specific reply next time. All right.